Hi, this is Steph Catherine. Is John running down to the meeting?
But before that.
Perfect, thank you.
We should have an opportunity for residents to discuss what's on their mind. Anyone? Yes.
Hi.
Identify yourself.
I'm Chris Cole, Shepherd Street. I see that the next item is the appointment of the election ethics committee member. And as you all know, I have thrown my hat in the ring for that. But I'm curious because the notice board didn't specify any criteria. And I'm just interested in what kind of qualifications you're looking for that position.
Right. Qualifications are willingness to put in the time and effort and be able to count.
That's for the elections part. What about the ethics?
The ethics part, here we are. The ethics part is mainly to make Martin's addition consistent with state and county law on issues of conflict of interest. And again, got to put in the effort and the time to consider things, that's all. So there's no real, you have to be a resident and you have to be willing to participate.
But there is no interviews or anything because I wasn't interviewed. So that's why I'm actually a little bit surprised that it actually says appointment. I was under the assumption since the public notice of the opening on the committee just went on the listserv last Friday, and this is now the next business day, I assumed that the discussion tonight would be about that position as opposed to the actual appointment.
No, the, in the past Frank Correll used the phrase at last meeting, it's been like pulling teeth to get people to participate and volunteer. And usually it's been a process of calling people one after the other until you finally find somebody who's willing to serve. And so this time to get wider notice, that's why I put it out on the listserv to see what kind of interest might be out there more generally.
And how many people indicated an interest?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight altogether.
Wow, wow.
With one position.
So that suggests we have to do business differently if we're not in this.
Well, we talked about, didn't you raise the question of going to five members?
Right, but right now, we will probably at the next meeting introduce a motion, right now the village code specifies only three members. And the charter which came before the code says at least three. The code which dominates says only three. I'm going to suggest and introduce a motion at the next regular meeting that we increase that number, make it consistent with the charter saying at least three, which could open it up to more people. So, but the thing is we just had an opening occur a day or so before I made that notice, gave that notice, yeah.
But I guess the fact that so many people, and I think that's great, that so many people have stepped up and expressed an interest, that, you know, suggests that gee, there might be some need for discussion about that and, you know, refinement of the criteria as opposed to, you know, just living here and expressing an interest. I can see that that would be relevant in the past when, as you say, it was like pulling teeth to get anybody to step up. But now that there are, you know, this many individuals, it's, I would think you, you know, that there would be some sort of discussion process. I mean, there's still what, more than a month before the actual election.
Well, but the process is going on right now, organizing the candidates, organizing at the next meeting there will be a presentation by the candidate. So that process has been ongoing for the last about two months. And so it's not just May 14th that occurs, but there's a whole series of meetings that occurred before that.
Well, the forms go at the 23rd.
Yeah.
Two points. Couldn't we introduce, can you introduce it now to increase the size?
Well, it was suggested that since it was not on the agenda. We were just thinking about doing that. If it was not on the agenda, can we?
We're not covered by the language that talks about elections committee. And secondly, I think we should give Frank a chance to talk.
Yeah, right. I don't know. I don't know any, I don't know what the rules are about whether something has to be on the agenda to take action.
Unfortunately, not here tonight.
Because you've had other, when it's been related to something on the agenda, it wasn't, we've been able to address it even when it's specifically cited.
Right. Let's come back to that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, another question?
I'm Sally Mary Aaron Turner Lane. I'd like to ask a question. We asked, I was at the last meeting and it was brought up that there were five, excuse me, four people on the committee.
Right.
And one of them was going to have to go because there were only three left. And so one, I guess, was asked to leave, I assume. And so there were three and now we're missing one. Why?
Another person resigned.
Two people have resigned?
Well, one person was inappropriately selected of the four, and he left. And then one after that left three.
But why were they not given a chance to come back on the committee if they were already on it and then were asked? The reason that they were asked to leave was because they weren't supposed to be four.
There were several issues involved in that. And he, well, he never replied. He never replied.
Oh.
Is there another? Yeah. Frank? Frank, you want to respond? Here's a longstanding member of the election committee, Frank Correll.
Yes, I very much feel like it's ten little Indians being reduced and.
And then there were two.
I've been in close contact with the chairman of the committee who's in Florida right now. I seem to be the only breathing member of the committee here tonight. Mr. Chairman, I and Ted's daughter together sent you an email on Sunday, the 29th, in which we commended you for circulating a notice throughout the village that such a vacancy had occurred and asking us, we trusted that you and fellow council members would consult with us, veteran committee members might mention that the chairman, Ted's daughter, is on his 25th year doing this work for the benefit of the village. I myself don't have a record like that to put forth, but I have been doing this work for seven years and I believe I was chairman for five. So I have some kind of an idea of what the requirements are for getting this election work done. It involves a lot of donkey work, it involves several meetings, and then of course, at the time of the election, we sit there and deal with the voters and then count. It's not the sort of thing that one does while sitting around having a cigarette or a beer. It takes some time. Under the circumstances, we felt that perhaps our inputs and some of our insights might be of value to the council before they chose a member to join what will be Ted and myself to do all this donkey work, if I may use that term. No such endeavor to contact us, share the names of applicants has been made. Ted and I can only say that this procedure seems to be contrary to what any reasonable standard of open covenants openly arrived at would be. And while we did nominate one person who unfortunately can't be here this evening, a former member of the committee, Molly Rule, who did wonderful work with us last year, and then a further candidate in the form of Chris Cole materialized, we find, and I speak not only as a member of the committee, but also as a resident who's lived here now for over 30 years, we find that this is an extraordinary and very sad way of proceeding. And I want to make sure that this gets into the record. Thank you. Oh, one other point. When this section called residence comments ends, does that mean that even though the matter that's being discussed is one with which Ted Stoddard and I are specifically charged with handling on behalf of this village, we'll not be able to participate in the discussion, number one. And number two, these residents who've turned out for this meeting this evening will not be able to offer their insights either. Can you please clarify that for me?
After, well, you can, everyone can offer their comments right now. And when we begin the discussion, then it's up to the council to decide. Let me say, respond, I received your, thank you for your note yesterday. I think it is as stated in the charter and in the ordinances, the role of the council to nominate is what it says, the council will nominate the members of the committee.
I believe the term you mean approve or appoint.
Appoint, appoint, I'm sorry, appoint.
I don't think you mean nominate.
Appoint, appoint.
Yes, sir. And I don't see anything in the email I sent to you which questions your ability to do that.
Right.
We were pointing out our heartfelt trust that we would be consulted. Consultation is not the same as arrogating to ourselves the decision.
Well, okay, thank you for, your point is taken. And in the past, this, in fact, in the past, it was never, we never consulted and never had a public discussion. It was telephone call, you tried to find somebody, they were appointed. And so I think today, or this time, by going to the public, getting more nominations, we've opened it up considerably, as we say, which is what, one of the things that.
It's our purpose.
Right. Which is one of the things that is suggesting incentive, providing the incentive to increase the number because of the very active response that we got compared to earlier times, as you said, when it was so difficult to even round up three people.
Well, I do hope that this discussion is in the record. I'd like to ask my question. Could you proceed, the two of you, for another month if we postponed making a decision or gave everyone an opportunity who's interested to participate?
You mean could Ted and I manage this by ourselves?
For a month?
For this election?
Yes.
I think my answer would be the following, yes, with a qualification. And that is that I think that with the interest shown here in this whole question, that we would perhaps ask for the help of non-voting volunteers as we find it necessary.
We had raised this with Ron about the role of volunteers in this.
Okay.
Okay. What's your opinion about postponing for a month?
To, for a month or just to have another meeting, give everyone a chance to present themselves, just like they were candidates for election, and just as John was saying, you know, to provide the service and the transparency we desire. Does, yeah, okay.
I don't know that we need an open forum, but written statements could be helpful. Do we really need to have all eight of them make their presentation to the council to read it out?
Brief, make it brief. Let them.
I would suggest that I think, you know, we can appoint somebody.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hearing.
Okay.
Just because someone would be appointed tonight doesn't mean that we couldn't use the volunteers to join. And I know that for Frank and Ted, should they ever choose to, you know, leave the committee, then bringing more people in as volunteers now, whether we increase to three or five, may keep us in a safer place regarding interest and involvement, you know, giving people the chance to volunteer and participate without necessarily having to commit to owning the process is a good way to introduce people to it.
But we're also asking to give up the right to vote. What?
You can vote in the election.
No, you didn't vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I could not follow.
Yeah, I'm not.
I wish, I wish that these public meetings were perhaps.
Amplified.
With a little bit better sound.
Frank, my suggestion was we could go ahead with an appointment tonight, but that the folks who are interested in continuing could volunteer in accordance with the guidance that Ron gave us, so that they would have the opportunity to get to know what's going, how it works, so that one day when you and Ted choose to leave the committee, then there would be more, you know, there would be people there and available to step in. So it's kind of before you buy the job, you know, before you buy the car, you get to participate, kick the wheels a little bit, and then make a decision if you want to be on the committee.
I think my answer to that is that I would want to go back to the email that I quoted before. And that is that we believe that no appointment is appropriate unless you go to the trouble of at least consulting us. Remember, I said no appointment is appropriate, not illegal or anything like that. But I'm concerned a little bit about what this whole circus looks like at this point in the record. Mr. Chairman, I've seen a number of emails that bother me profoundly. One of them is a little piece of advice you received from one of our more distinguished citizens and kind of an orator at large, Mr. Steve Schmal, which was intended to point out to you perhaps some problems with appointing a certain member of the community who's not here tonight to the committee. In the process, a very serious aspersion was cast upon both Ted and myself in that we didn't have sense enough to conduct our discussions and our decisions, to the extent that we even make decisions, without knowing how to proceed and when to ask someone to recuse themselves. If you remember, on the 19th of March, we had quite an interesting back and forth about recusal and people doing it themselves, or whether they should be recused and what have you. A discussion which to me seemed to be playing with shadows. I should say that from my former position on the council back in 1994 to 98, I believe, we ran into a very interesting case of ethics and possible conflict of interest. And that had to do with two neighbors who were feuding about what the one guy wanted to do to his house. And I was vice chairman of the council at the time, and the chairman, with whom I, in all honesty, had a lot of disagreements, said to me that he felt uncomfortable being in a position to make a judgment on that because he wanted the situation to be like Caesar's wife, above suspicion. And he turned the responsibility over to me. And I must say, still today, I honor him for doing that, even though I can't say I was particularly apt to take the job. And quite honestly, I am not happy at the idea of suddenly being faced with an appointment. You can do it, of course, being faced with an appointment of someone I don't think I've ever exchanged two words with. I have no idea what that person's time might be. All I can say is frankly, Bill's proposal strikes me as being considerably more attractive than the other. And I think I'll stop at that.
What does that, you mean, to postpone the issue for the moment?
And to have input.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
One other quick question. Do you, do you five all feel that you know all of these people who have come forward well enough to make a decision tonight on one of them?
No, no.
Okay, well, that's what I'm wondering about.
Yeah.
Hannah Correll, Turner Lane. I have two points. I see that this is a special session. I think we were all here most of us a week ago, two weeks ago. What's wrong with having another special session to discuss, for the council to discuss increasing the ethics and election committee into five members? Number two, I see here that the council is ready to appoint a committee member. May I ask when and how the council decided whom to appoint?
We have not, that is what, we proceed after this discussion.
Oh, I only see a later discussion about the village manager.
That's right.
On the agenda that was posted, it did say, I believe it said appointment of, of election committee member.
But anyway, it says you're 7:45. That's the appointment. And then adjournment.
Adjournment for executive session.
Yeah, but you are appointing an election and ethics committee member at 7:45 before the adjournment.
Right.
I would just like to know when and how that point, that selection of that person happened.
Well, what we had been considering, it would proceed at this moment, as soon as everybody had their chance to speak. Anybody else have something? I saw, didn't I see another hand up in the back? Yeah. Identify.
Oh, my name is Maria Watson. I'm Turner Lane also. I'm a little confused, especially with what's going on on our listserv as to what's going on in Village of Martin's addition lately. Because it seems like there's a lot of infighting or there are problems, council members calling each other out, not managing the listserv properly. It's feeling really uncomfortable, and circus is probably the best word I can use to describe it. I'm just telling you as a resident, I find it very uncomfortable. I don't know if that's the goal of the council, but I think that it's coming out that way.
Let me, yeah, John, sorry.
I share your concerns, and I feel that things have gotten out of control, in large part because the impression has been given that the village manager's contract was totally up for grabs, and people who had their issues with the village management decided to jump in. And there's been, there are people who write to the council members on the council list that's not shared with everybody else, and there are other people who use the listserv, and it really has, it's like a bad village gone sour. It really is not a happy situation.
No, because you said this.
And I think that what's happened is that it's gotten out of control because, quite frankly, we, the council, let things slip and didn't stay in control of what the process was or how it was going. And part of it is, is that elections are free, and the election is one issue, but the village manager's contract is our issue. And our, we make our decision before there's a village election. And in certain ways, some of the wires have gotten crossed. That's the only thing I can think of. But I personally am appalled by what's going on. It's not healthy for the community.
No, it's not. It's very unhealthy for the community.
It's not, it doesn't help anybody on whatever they may think. And I think that it's, we're at a point where right now, the best thing for the council to do is to.
Do its job.
Do its job. And our job, as I understand it tonight, is to go into executive session and do what we're supposed to do, dealing with the contract renewal for the village manager. And that's pretty much it.
I'll follow that up with you. The motion that we postpone our progress on the elections committee, the issue of who's appointed and how many people are appointed for a reasonable period, two weeks, say, something like that?
Well, the next council meeting is in three weeks, so that can work.
Well, let's do it in two weeks.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Are all five of us available?
We'll have to come up with the times.
You have a question over there?
Yes, Lynn Mull.
Lynn Mull, Oxford Street. Just a point of clarification, I may be wrong with this, but I think on occasion over the years since the listserv was established, there has been an occasional statement in there that the listserv is not an official organ or communication point, you know, for the Village of Martin's addition. But still, it seems we get notices on the listserv which have official business. And then I don't, and if I'm correct, that the two are separate and not connected, then we shouldn't be getting notices on the listserv. We should be getting them through some other means.
That's a very good point.
As listserv managers, let me address that in part. I wasn't bothered by that.
I am.
Please, I didn't interrupt you. Don't interrupt me, okay? That I felt the most messages were of public interest. But my understanding is that there's a movement to be able to do that, so they're not on the listserv, so that constant.
Constant Contact.
Hate that name. Constant Contact can be used to push out messages to the community. So your issue is, will be addressed.
I mean, it's not just, you know, this recent circus, but we not infrequently receive emails through the listserv from this office, which are in official capacity, and that's the only thing.
Okay.
And if there's separation, then I should be, there should be separation.
Agreed. We're on the same page.
And maybe there's a way that you can work that out.
The Constant Contact is the means of separating the two of them. So Constant Contact pushes out the messages that are official through the website.
It's like a one-way listserv. It just sends you a message, people can't reply to it. So like whenever I'm giving away Playmobil playsets, you know, that just goes out to the listserv. And whenever they're sending a message out, that trash will not be picked up on Tuesday, it'll come from a Constant Contact address. If somebody wants to reply to that, they can't. You know what I mean? It won't be a message after message. It's just one way coming through.
But the assistant manager here has been.
No, it's a commercial product.
Right.
And a lot of people use it, so it's not.
The assistant manager here has been working on this project and can fill us in on some of the details.
Mr. Welly, we've had the same concern for quite a while. And with limited options before, we would always refer people back to the website in an attempt to use the listserv as, almost as little as possible, only as a connection. But recently, we have worked with people at the company, Constant Contact, and they work with several of the area municipalities. And it allows us to have a more official way to provide official information, leaving the listserv to be just a community resource that people in the community can use to be able to separate those out. And that's a work in progress, but we're almost there.
So, let's say one of those Constant Contact messages comes from this office, then the only way to respond is to initiate a new correspondence.
That's correct.
Either show up in person or draft an email directly to.
Correct. Or to pick up the phone, and also through our website, there's a way to contact us directly through the website.
Thank you.
Okay.
I want to second the motion.
Go ahead.
George.
Oh, what was it? Rephrase the motion again?
That we postpone for two weeks to address the election and the size of the election committee.
Okay, the appointment of a, the appointment of the election committee. Okay. Are you second that?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone, we have any discussion on that?
Yeah, I think I'll just raise two points. You know, this is my third year on the council, and we have had at least two or three different people be appointed to the election and ethics committee that I didn't know, but I took the recommendations from my colleagues, and we voted on them immediately in meetings and moved on. I think that that's, that's a precedent that's set. Whether or not that can change, I think, is. Whether or not that can change, I think is, is something that could be discussed further. Also, the changing of the number, again, I would just say, you know, we, while there's a lot of interest right now, we haven't had a lot of interest in the past. And using this as an opportunity to get a full complement of people on the committee as we're supposed, speaking of doing our duty, as we're supposed to do, and having them set up and then giving them the guidance that Ron provided us about volunteers, what can be done, when it can be done, that's consistent with the charter and the codes. We get that in place now, then we have the opportunity for people to be involved in the next two different, you know, council election-related events. We don't get that in place tonight, then we're gonna be putting it off based on when can we possibly meet again next? When can, you know, if there are residents who are here, you know, spring break over the next two weeks, can they all write their one page or whatever we're gonna ask them to do? So I think, I think there's a precedent for moving forward tonight.
I think it's a, I think it's a bad precedent.
Well...
Robert, do you like to...
Sorry. I'm, I will go along with moving ahead a couple of weeks. Let me just say, the reason the precedent was there in the past is that we never gave it much thought. It was hard enough getting a single candidate, let alone seven, so...
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight, however many are on the list here. And so it was just something, well, thank God, we got a live body here who wants to help out. So I think that's what established the precedent in the past. We never sat down and really thought it through in, to any degree. What?
That's fine, let's, let's put it into a vote then.
To shift the selection of the appointment, let me make this, to shift the appointment of election committee meeting, appointment, and to consider...
Also, to consult, give it time, to consult with the...
And, and to consider the, or to...
Input.
Well, to consider the input from the election committee and to, what's the phrase? To introduce a motion or a, an amendment to the code?
Yes.
To increase the number of people on the committee. We will do that at a, at a time that we can find available for all of us.
But the appointment will be for three people this year.
This will be, because that's what the code says. Right. Okay, that is...
Beth, you got it, okay?
I think so.
That is the, the motion. Let's proceed to a vote. I, I, I'll vote for it.
Nay.
Okay, four to one.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, then, given that, that wraps up this meeting. We have one more comment in the back.
Yes, apropos of that then, since you have deferred it for another couple of weeks, do you anticipate hearing from the eight of us who have expressed an interest? I mean, is there anything further that we should do? And if so, how will we, we be notified of that? Because I share Mr. Welly's concern about this notification process via the listserv as opposed to...
No, it won't be through listserv, it'll be through direct telephone or email.
But what if other people, I mean, the, the time period for, you know, throwing your hat in the ring and expressing an interest in the position was really quite short. I mean, the listserv thing was last Friday, and here we are today. So there could be another eight people in the village who are interested. Frankly, this committee is something I've had an interest in for several years, and I've always read the Martins Edition to see, you know, oh, is there gonna be an opening, something, you know? That is the, what I've always considered the official notification for those kinds of positions, just like membership on the council itself. So I'm a little bit concerned about making sure that you get all the information you need from as many people in the community who may be willing to serve.
So we can post it like we do other stuff, one here on the door and one downstairs?
The, I'll just note that the number of applications or people sending in their name fell off, haven't gotten any more in the last several days, so...
But, you know, I mean, this is spring break, and there could be people who are on vacation with their kids. And the notice itself didn't specify a closing.
There wasn't.
Which is, you know, typical for things. There's usually a finite amount of time, just as there is for indicating an interest in running for the council. So it's just kind of open-ended and wishy.
Yes, it was.
Well, it is, and we're overwhelmed by the outpouring of people interested in something that previously people thought was a...
Death sentence.
...week-old dead herring.
Overwhelmed and excited.
We're overwhelmed and we're...
John, it's where the real power lies.
Well, you broke the code.
I saw one other hand up, yeah.
I just wanted to add, this is fascinating. My name is Michelle Levine. I'm on Turner Lane. And I wanted to thank all of you for listening to residents and hearing residents, and for the time that you put in to your jobs. And I'm, this is especially fascinating for me because I'm in clinical and community psychology, and I'm doing my...
We need you. Give us your card.
And it's tough. And I think that one of the comments I heard was about trust. And you have a lot of power in holding that trust of the community. So I would just commend you on the thought and care that you're putting into everything that you're doing and kind of, you know, the development of this community as a process. There are all kinds of processes that can be put into place, you know, to try to solve problems and to fix things. And it's a community effort, you know, it's not just, I mean, I know you all are five people, but, but you do, you, you have a very fragile trust in your hands. So thank you for being so careful with that.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you, thank you.
No one else has.
We're just, we're just earning our job, earning our pay here. Okay, I think that brings to an end all of the issues that are on the agenda, and we will now close this open part of the meeting and proceed. Thank you, thank you all for coming.
If I mentioned I'm doing my dissertation on development of trust over time.
I'm sure you're gonna say...